Go Coyotes. You guys hear me okay?
Yep, heard you Jess.
Thank you, thank you.
Musting my mic. Yep, it's working, yay. Good evening, everybody. We're pulling it all together. I don't know why the computer acts so slowly when you're like under somewhat of a time crunch. It's just like it senses, I tell my students that computers can sense fear. So it is six thirty, we are having one other person joining us, but might be a little late if I got the message correct. So, but we have our quorum here, so we're looking good. All right, so let's go ahead and start our recording and then I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Centennial School Board for October twenty second. This is a work session, so it is a little bit different than our normal work time or our normal board meeting times. But we're going to go ahead and get started and working down our agenda. So the first thing we need to do is approve the meeting agenda that's been presented on Board Book. Do I have someone who will move to approve the agenda?
Move to approve the agenda.
Second, somebody?
Oh, second.
Thank you Jess, Jess is seconding. Although, okay, all those in favor of approving the agenda as presented in Board Book, say aye and raise your hand, or say yes and raise your hand. Hi guys. It always feels so nice. It's just a good practice though, because audios, we're never sure of and we can go back and look at the videos. Superintendent Owens, do we have any guests this evening that would need any introductions?
Not this time.
All right, then Board members, we're going to go ahead and move on to the approval of minutes. So you have in Board Book your October eighth board minutes. May I have a motion to approve as presented?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Thank you, second?
October second or eighth?
Excellent. Michael, did you second?
Yeah.
Oh, perfect, thank you. And then Michael did the second on that. Okay, all those in favor of approving the minutes for October eighth, syndicate by saying aye and raising hands. Aye.
Aye.
Thank you so much, I appreciate that.
Excuse me, Chair Shields.
Yes.
I have Director Stanley texting me her vote. Since her audio is not working and she gave aye for the minutes and aye for the approval of the agenda. I just want to note that for the record.
And that's excellent. If you can keep track of her, that would be perfect until we can help things, you know.
Thank you.
Technology works. So we're moving on, since there's no public forum during work session evenings, we're going to move directly into reports. And this will bring forward, well, I don't know if Superintendent Owens, you want to introduce Dr. Katsuta and this topic, or how you two have got a plan for presenting your report, but here we go.
Great, thank you Chair Shields. So we have the Division Twenty Two Standards Report. It is an annual report and Division Twenty Two basically comprises all of the things about how we do school. So it's pretty broad ranging and I'll go ahead and turn it over to Dr. Katsuta, who will orient us to what Division Twenty Two is and our status with respect to those standards.
Excellent, thank you very much. So I'm going to start by sharing my screen. Will you give me a thumbs up if you can see what I'm projecting? Excellent, okay. So it's my pleasure to present the report on Division Twenty Two Standards Assurances for the twenty four, twenty five school year. Talk a little bit more about why it's for last year as I present an overview of the report here. Okay, we'll start with a brief overview of what the standards and assurances are. The purpose and structure and the process districts must follow if they are out of compliance. So what are the Division Twenty Two standards? The name Division Twenty Two is pretty abstract and can be confusing for people who are not familiar with administrative rules and how they're organized. All rules adopted by the State Board of Education go into what they call Chapter Five Eighty One, which is Oregon Department of Education's agency number. There are twenty six divisions within the chapter that rules can be assigned to. When roles are assigned to Division Twenty Two, they become part of Oregon's standards for elementary and secondary schools. The educational standards that either the Oregon Legislature or the State Board has determined must be met in order to be a standard school district. Compliance with the Division Twenty Two standards ensures that every student in Oregon Public Schools is provided with a baseline level of service that meets the standards set by the state. These standards are not only the requirements that districts must adhere to, but they are monitored and compliance is tied to state school funds. The Division Twenty Two standards include over fifty individual rules, which are organized in five categories as you see listed here. Aligned with the priorities for student success as identified in the Oregon's reimagined accountability framework set out by ODE. Standards as you see listed are five. One, high quality learning and experience. Two, aligned and focused educational systems. Three, engaged partners and communities. Four, safe and inclusive schools. And five, committed and supported staff. And so as we go through the roles, you'll see those end up being sort of the headers of clusters of rules that are organized under that category as described by the headers. These are a few examples of the specific rules that fall into each of these categories. For the two thousand twenty four, twenty five school year, we are reporting on compliance with fifty seven rules. The rules have been generally, or the rules have generally remained the same over the last five or ten years. Maybe even more for some rules with slight additions or modifications every year. For example, we have been reporting on required minimum instructional minutes for decades in Oregon. And an example of an individual rule that has changed would be the establishment of the District Equity Advisory Committee, which is a recently established rule, right? So you can see over time, most of the rules remain generally the same with some additions based on where the legislature sits and Oregon Department of Education sits in terms of deciding what standard should be in place. To learn more about the specific requirements for certain roles, I've provided a resource, which is a good place to start. What I won't cover tonight is all of the fine grain details that are included in each of the rules. But you'll see uploaded to Board Book is a summary sheet that lists every single rule. And under these rules, they're actually hyperlinked, and so I can go here and actually hyperlink and you'll see it'll bring up the rules at a glance, right? And this is also uploaded to Board Book. This is a sample of that ODE has provided, but you'll see something on Board Book that looks like this, right? So let's see, else scrolled. Oh, actually, I should bring up that sheet. We can bring up that sheet in the end if anyone wants me to show them. But as you dig into each of these hyperlinks provided in the uploaded sheet in Board Book, you'll actually see some of the fine grain details specific to each particular rule, what's required. All right. This report is part of the Division Twenty Two Standards Assurances Process, which is required by statute. ORS three hundred twenty seven dot one oh three. The assurances process is a combined local and state accountability model that acknowledges the importance of the local school board, which has broad ranging authority under Oregon's local control model, as well as direct reporting to ODE. Districts are required to report to the community in a school district board meeting and post the report on the district website in terms of all the standards of which they are in compliance with. Districts must then submit assurances to ODE. For each rule, the district either certifies if the district's in compliance or states that the district is out of compliance. And in that report proposes corrective action and a timeline attached to that action. This fall reporting schedule aligns with the rhythm of the school year calendar as it prompts districts to reflect at the close of the school year in areas of needed attention. And then plan for reporting to the Board on compliance and any corrective action plans in September, October. And then finally to ODE in November. Once ODE has received, ODE has received all the assurances. They go through a process of reviewing them and follow up with districts that have self-reported non-compliance. So why is this an important process? This process signals the school districts and ODE's joint commitment to providing a high quality educational experience and equitable opportunities for all students in our care. As part of the shared responsibility to provide quality service for our students and communities, this system promotes reciprocal accountability between school districts, their local school boards, and the Oregon Department of Education. Division Twenty Two standards articulate the floor of the education to be provided to students, not the ceiling. Compliance with Division Twenty Two Oregon Administrative Rules ensures a basic level of service across the state. Division Twenty Two standards outline the baseline expectations and the assurance process offers an opportunity for school districts to not only demonstrate compliance, but also to reflect on areas in need of attention and alignment and to plan for how to address them, thus acting as a lever for improvement and innovation. ODE's goal is to maintain these standards by partnering with districts and providing technical assistance so all districts are meeting the minimum requirements. In addition, the agency is working to share exemplary practices and resources across districts to support them in moving beyond the floor toward the implementation of high leverage strategies that will positively impact students' learning and school experiences. So you'll see here, five bullet points of what happens when a district's out of compliance. Basically, ODE reviews our corrective action plan for any role we're out of compliance with. The plan is, if the plan is not approved, ODE contacts the district. If for whatever reason the action plan a district provides doesn't meet their minimum standards, they don't approve it, right? Once the district has an approved plan in place, ODE reaches out to provide support as needed. If the district fails to come back into compliance after an opportunity for correction, corrective action has been provided, ODE may withhold a portion of the district's state school fund monies. Before I move into the report for assurances for last school year, are there any questions? I know this is riveting. All right, so we make our report in the fall for the previous school year so that we can report accurately. There are some rules in which we can't say we're in compliance with, in compliance with, until the school year is over. One example of that is meeting instructional time requirements. We may have planned our schedule so that we would be in compliance, but it's possible due to inclement weather or other circumstances that we would not end up meeting those minute requirements. So we don't report on a school year until the following school year. At the same time, we're responsible for using this report as an opportunity to review requirements for the current school year and to ensure that we're meeting compliance requirements or have a plan for how to correct any deficiencies. Last year and currently, there are two requirements that have been waived. First is section three of a requirement called the Assessment of Essential Skills Rule. These are assessment requirements for graduation and it was waived for graduates beginning in two thousand twenty. The waiver will be in place through the end of two thousand twenty seven, twenty eight school year. There is a section of this requirement called Section Two of the Essential Skills Rule, which involves local performance assessments and local performance assessments are still required. Just the wave of some of the other assessments for graduation are waived. Also waived is the related requirement that districts have a policy regarding whether English language learners may demonstrate proficiency on essential skills assessments for graduation in their language of origin. On the next two slides, you'll see rule revisions for Division Twenty Two rules. First is related to district curriculum requiring social emotional learning for K twelve students and personal finance education, higher education and career path skill building for students in grades nine through twelve. Second is the modified diploma, extended diploma and certificate of attendance requiring districts to provide parents information annually about diploma availability and requirements and disclosure about certificates of attendance. The third is a requirement related to the district substance abuse prevention and intervention plan. This new rule is the only rule that the district's not in compliance with this year. More details about what is required and what we don't have in place will be shared next. I wanted to invite April to share a little bit about this particular rule that CSD is out of compliance with and share a little bit about the action plan we have set up and the timeline.
Hi, good evening, thank you. The, the OAR says that each school district shall develop a comprehensive plan. What districts received clarification this fall, actually just a few weeks ago, was that that is interpreted to be that a written plan is required. We are not the only district that was that had not interpreted the language that way initially. We do have all of the elements of a Um we do have all of the elements of a comprehensive substance use prevention and intervention plan. That includes K twelve instructions, so um the the lessons that students are getting. Policies and procedures related to substance use, intervention, referral, drug related medical emergencies. Public info ca- in uh information that we share with students, parents and staff. And professional development related to drug and alcohol use prevention. Those elements are in place in the district. What we do not have, though, is them in a comprehensive written plan. That has been brought forth and to the board for approval. Um over the summer, O D E published an implementation tool that districts can use. Um as well as a template for a written plan um and um. And uh published additional resources that are available to districts now. Um that weren't available earlier, including Standards Aligned Substance Use Prevention Lessons, K twelve. Available in Oregon Open Learning Communication Toolkit um. Uh pre uh developed professional learning training slides that we can use to or adapt for professional development. And that, like I said earlier, the comprehensive planning tools with a template and an exemplar plan. So two um. With that new information that we have, um we uh will be uh getting a work group together. That'll be representative of teachers from all levels and administrators. Um that will uh review the new tools. The um the template for the plan um. Complete the plan confirming that we meet all of the required elements. Um and we will uh document evidence of um meeting those required components. And bring the plan back to you uh no later than June thirty twenty twenty six.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Director Olson?
I do have one question. Um you mentioned that we have the elements in place. Is this something that like, where did these? Elements come from? Is it something from the state, from? You know, Multnomah County, who is giving us this information that we are then turning around and saying? Telling our youth that this is what's. Needs to happen for substance use and intervention planning. Oh, you're muted, April. Director Olson.
You're muted.
Let me try that again. Um are you asking about the elements? Who's saying what elements need to be in the plan? Or who's saying like what the lessons to students need to be or the communication to parents?
More like the lessons and the communications, you know, like. I have my own feelings about having an opt out. Is that something that we're gonna have to provide for families? You know, um more of the theoretical behind where this information is coming from.
Right, the um there are sample lessons um available as well as um standards. Um that are age appropriate, that uh emphasize um prevention. Um the O A R does um state what the basic information needs to be. Um but like I said, the over this this summer, um and as part of our health adoption, we are looking uh for resources. Over including the ones that O D E provided over the summer for um for. Lessons that um that meet the requirements in the O A R.
Thank you very much.
Are there any other questions before we move forward? No, okay. All right, so looking ahead. Uh we have some new rules that went into effect this year. Requiring a district to establish a district equity advisory committee. Of which we have presented to board on several occasions over the course of the last year and a half. We have met this requirement. Uh the rule on administration of state assessments uh has been revised. To require a survey called the C E D survey. I'd have to remember the acronym for that. It's not coming to me at the top of my head. Denise will remember. Uh we have to clarify the requirement of the English Language Proficiency Assessment or L P A screener. For students to identify uh that they live in a multilingual household. And clarification on regarding district adherence to O D E decisions regarding student test records. And I want to say C E D is student emotional. Uh can you Denise, do you have it off the top of your head? I should have put some, I should have uh spelled out the acronym.
Yes, it's the Student Educational Equity Development Survey, not off the top of my head, but Google's a good friend.
We've had similar acronyms that have had similar, you know, uh. You know, when we lay them out, similar words to the title. Um and so this is a survey that has been developed by O D E recently. And we've had several different iterations uh of parts of this survey before. And this is O D E's uh latest survey uh for us. And it's required to be uh implemented or facilitated. Or administered, like maybe better word. Uh lastly, on the horizon is a rule on the updated educational leadership administrator standards. Which require updates of our administrator evaluation system by September thirty two thousand twenty seven. Uh for us in all districts, this is actually a significant undertaking as it will require explicit review of um of not only um. The standards with administrators for uh transparency and clarity as to standards in their evaluation system. But it will require technical changes in a pretty involved evaluation system that we have in place, so. I'm very happy that we have a year and two thirds to to get on board with that particular rule, so. Um that concludes um assurances presentation, and I welcome any questions you may have.
I do have one more question. Um does with that last piece that you talked about, does COSA have any plan on? Coming to bringing groups together, or is it really every district is kind of on their own to figure it out?
Oh, that is a good question. I'm not sure. I have not heard anything yet from COSA. It wouldn't surprise uh me if they came up with some supports or suggestions or I I don't know. So I haven't heard anything about that yet.
Thank you.
Yeah, the tools uh already been created. So it's a matter of us uh making meaning of it and then applying it, so. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Kusira. No more questions, just double checking back with everyone? All right. That was good. That's always good to be reminded of what our requirements are. Even as long winded, and I appreciate the um hyperlinking to the rules. Think that that's important, especially if we ever have any additional questions, we can come back and ask you or Director Olson as well. So that would move us to the superintendent report, so Superintendent Owens.
Great, thank you Chair Shields. This is a medium sized report. Uh greetings, board members. It is my pleasure and privilege to share with you this update about happenings in our school district. As part of our ongoing long range facility planning process, we are preparing to launch. An important component of our engagement strategy in the form of an educational summit. The educational summit is designed to bring together a broad and representative group of district educators. To help us articulate a vision for the types of learning environments our students need now and in the future. Principals have been asked to shoulder tap educators who bring diverse perspectives based upon their job roles. Our goal is to ensure that the design priorities we set are grounded in educational purpose. And community context rather than driven solely by facility age or infrastructure needs. The educational summit will be held in partnership with our consultants from D L R Group. And it will serve as a lens for the larger facilities plan. This past month, Director Southerton, Chief Andreg and I had the opportunity to meet with our campus safety liaison team. And in a separate session with our facilities and custodial team as part of our twice yearly collaborative work sessions. These sessions represent an evolution from the listening sessions that we've held over the last few years. To more targeted, solution oriented conversations. During each session, department staff engaged in collaborative problem solving, helping us explore challenges. They had previ- previously identified and co construct meaningful steps forward. In both settings, it was encouraging to see the level of ownership team members are taking in their roles. Both in naming real world problems of practice and also in offering actionable ideas for improvement. From refining communication loops and clarifying expectations to strengthening partnerships with site staff. The conversations represent a shared commitment to ensuring our operations work supports safe, inclusive and well functioning schools. And speaking of our campus safety liaisons, this week we celebrate. America's Safe Schools Week, an initiative from the National School Safety Center. To promote safety and security in schools across the nation. This week focuses on the importance of creating safe learning environments. And encourages communities to work together to prevent violence and ensure the well being of students and staff. One of the groups which help us do that is our in our district is our campus safety liaison team. This group supports the students, staff and visitors of each of our schools each and every day. These staff members are trusted adults to our students, building rapport and encouraging them to be their to do their best every day. Thank you to our campus safety liaisons for all that they do to help keep our students, staff and our schools safe. Held during the third full week of October each year. National School Bus Safety Week is a public education program to bring awareness about the importance of school bus safety. School districts throughout the country observe School Bus Safety Week each year. As part of this week, social a social media reel was shared today that highlights how our own Centennial Transportation Department. Is working to keep students safe. In the video that I'll show you in a moment, our transportation team highlights some of the features and procedures. That help keep students safe while riding the school bus.
Hi, my name is Suzanne and I'm the Director of Transportation here at Centennial School District. And it's such a pleasure to celebrate National School Bus Safety Week with you. Uh every week is School Bus Safety Week for us here in Centennial. We have an amazing, hardworking team. We drive vehicles as small as a van all the way up to an enormous big bus. Some of you ride that. Um you'll be doing your evacuation drills this week to help you keep you safe. We have some incredible safety equipment. Of course, you get to know your drivers, right? Who keep you safe and your community on the bus who keep each other safe by using kind words, staying in your seat, all of those sorts of things. Listen to your driver. They really care about you. And some of our drivers are now going to show you some of the equipment, some of the procedures that we use to keep everybody safe while riding.
So something that we're trained to do, um starting off is first check our vehicle. Make sure there are no visible damages, dents or any abrasions, cuts or to our tires. That everything is secure. Uh next, we go ahead and move on into the engine. We check oils. All of the levels in the engine are are full. Uh we go ahead and start a brake test. Our buses are mostly air brakes. So we always want to test air brakes to make sure that those are safe. And if our air brakes do not pass, then we do not use that vehicle. We ride a slip and our mechanics work on those vehicles. After it's passed an air brake inspection, we go ahead and check all of our emergency exit doors. We make sure that they're fully functional and we start with our lights, our amber lights, which is when we pick up and drop off students.
Thanks so much for taking the time to learn about what we do here at Transportation. We care about you so much. Um we do our utmost to stay safe every single trip, every single ride. We have procedures in place. We have special equipment to keep you safe. All of our drivers are trained to the highest standards per Oregon Department of Education. All of our equipment is amazing. Uh you also need to do what you can to keep yourself safe. And that's basically following the bus rules. The bus rules are there so that we can all have a safe ride. And all get to where we're going in one piece and part of an excellent, outstanding Centennial community. Thank you.
Great, and I think uh the audience beyond us here was also for our students, um as you can see, kind of the phrasing there. I'm pleased to announce that we are moving forward with implementation of Time Clock Plus. The new electronic timekeeping system for hourly employees across the district. This change has been in development for several months and advances our objectives to improve accuracy, reduce paperwork. And support staff with a more efficient system for time entry and payroll processing. The rollout has taken place over the course of the fall with operational departments such as the custodial. And Nutrition Services participating in test clock ins and training sessions in the initial phase. Feedback from these early users has helped uh inform the broader deployment across school sites, which will begin next month. Time Clock Plus is already in use in several neighboring districts, including David Douglas. It has been positively received. We've commuted uh communicated closely with O S A leadership throughout the planning process. And they have expressed support for the change. We will continue to offer training and technical support as we expand implementation to ensure a smooth transition for all impacted staff. We're proud to share that Butler Creek Elementary was selected to receive twenty thousand dollars. Um in a technology grant through Intel's National Score with Intel Core Competition. In partnership with our local Best Buy store in Gresham. This competitive grant opportunity recognized high performing retail stores across the country. And as a result of their success, the Gresham Best Buy team was given the opportunity. To select a local school to receive a significant technology investment on Intel's behalf. In a strong example of community partnership, Butler Creek was nominated by a Best Buy employee who is also a Butler Creek parent. The resulting twenty thousand dollar award came in the form of a Best Buy shopping spree. Coordinated with the support of Intel's concierge team, our own I T department and school leaders. Last Friday, October seventeenth, Principal Gail Imron Sedaris and I attended a celebratory event. At the Gresham store alongside representatives from Intel and Best Buy. Using the awarded funds, Butler Creek was able to prioritize purchases that will have an immediate impact on student access. In school operations, including touchscreen Chromebooks. Printers, a public address system for the stage and cafeteria. And a digital signage display for school wide communications. We extend our appreciation to the Intel and Best Buy teams for their generosity. And to Principal um Imron Sedaris for her leadership in coordinating this opportunity on behalf of Butler Creek students and families. Following the Best Buy celebration on Friday, I joined Director of Business and Operations Paul Southerton. And Facilities Director Brian Van Dyke for a site visit to Nike's campus in Beaverton. The purpose of the visit was twofold. First, to personally thank Nike's Global Places and Services Team for recent donations of classroom furniture. And to explore additional opportunities to reuse and redistribute as Nike consolidates several of its annexed facilities. Nike has generously supported Centennial School District through donations that align with their sustainability and surplus diversion efforts. Previous items have included tables now in use in several schools, including Centennial High School, Pleasant Valley and Palbute. We're in the process of identifying further items suitable for classroom and cafeteria use. Including student desks, chairs, stools and whiteboard tables. We're grateful for Nike's ongoing partnership and commitment to educational reuse and for Brian Van Dyke's. Leadership in coordinating the logistics of these donations. As a reminder, coming up at the end of this month is the Oregon School Boards Association Fall Regional Dinner. Scheduled for Thursday, October thirtieth. From five to eight P M at the M B C Suites in Portland, at the Portland Airport. Um this event brings together school board members from across the region for discussion and connection around statewide education topics. Board members who plan to attend are asked to submit their R S V P and meal selection by October twenty sixth. Embassy previously sent a calendar invitation with an R S V P link in additional details. Please reach out to her directly if you have any questions or need assistance. And finally, I have been asked to broadcast this far and wide, and I'm glad to do so. Centennial High School staff and students invite you to join them in celebrating the achievements of the class of two thousand twenty six. At this year's Eagle Expo. The event highlights the culmination of four years of research, career exploration and the development of students post high school plans. It's a powerful opportunity. It's a powerful opportunity to see our students articulate what they've learned and where they're headed. Those who attend will have the chance to engage directly with students and ask questions and provide meaningful feedback on their presentations. Your participation helps reinforce the value of these milestone moments and demonstrates the strength of our shared community. Event details are displayed here on the screen, and if you plan to attend, please let Missy know so she can RSVP on your behalf. And as always, CHS Principal Mr. Miller is here tonight and may wish to share additional details. Mr. Miller, not to put you on the spot, but anything you want to add?
No, I think you did a great job. We'd love to see you all there. It is a great opportunity to showcase our wonderful students and for you to give them feedback on their post-high school plans.
And what's actually happening at the event is that the students are presenting their plan to adults that attend. So if there are more adults that attend, there's more adults that can be presented to. And so it's fun to engage with the students and see their presentation skills, and you'll have a chance to rate how they did on their presentation and preparation. Um, but it's also sad when you see that there are um, more kids there than adults sometimes, and there aren't enough adults to be presented to. So if you have the available time, it's nice to be able to share it with the students.
That was going to be my two cents that last year, like, I really wish that more adults in our community could come to this because there's so many students that are eager for that feedback. Um, and so this is, was a great event, and I encourage you all to come.
Thank you, Director Solowski. And with that, I invite any questions or comments you might have, and that concludes my superintendent's report.
Any questions, anyone? Very good. All right. Let's continue on with our agenda. We're on to confirmation items. I'd love to entertain a motion to confirm confirmation items listed in mass.
Motion to approve confirmation items.
Got a motion and second, Director Solowski and Director Harden. All those in favor indicate by saying aye and show hands.
Aye.
Aye.
And we know that, uh, Missy is taking care of Melissa, so, um.
Yes. Okay, good. An aye as well.
Perfect. Thank you so much. All right, Board members. Let's move on to our old business. Um, it doesn't. It's, it's been a long time coming, hasn't it? We've been talking about this for over a year, but this is our second read of the policies. JFCEB and the administrative regulation as well. So Director Olson and Superintendent Owens, I assume you are going to be walking us through this second read and any questions that Board members might be having.
Great. Thank you, Chair Shields. Um, I would just say before I pass it over to Director Olson, we had the initial read a couple of weeks ago. Um, there was a, um, comment in terms of a slight adjustment. Uh, Director Olson can speak directly to that. Um, in the interim time period, we haven't heard any, um, input, feedback, or questions from Board members, so, um, hopefully what we're presenting this evening is fairly straightforward. But I'll go ahead and turn it over to, uh, Director Olson to, um, present.
Good evening again. Um, yes, as, um, Superintendent Owens mentioned, uh, we did make one, um, slight change. Uh, if you are looking along on, on your devices, it would be on, um, the very top paragraph on page two of the second re-proposed policy. Um, based on comments from last meeting, um, we did add the word "in school" or "classroom lockers." We added that phrase, um, to be specifically, um, or a little more broad maybe than just lockers. Other than that, um, just cleaned up the strikeouts, um, and no, nothing else, um, has, um, no other changes were requested, and so none have been made since you saw the policy and AR previously.
Thank you. What I'm going to do, uh, Directors, is we're just going to go, um, around the horn, if you will, and ask if you have any additional questions or comment about this proposed policy before we put forward a motion. And our motion would be to include, if you will, um, the, I believe, well, we'll work just with the policy, then we'll look at the administrative regs separately. But we would be doing, um, the policy and the deletion of the policy. So it's really kind of a twofold part on the first motion that will be entertaining. But prior to, um, making that motion, if somebody would like to start thinking about that, that motion might sound like, we'll go around and, um, check in with each of you as Board members. So Director Harden, any questions, concerns, or comments?
Glad to move on. And let's do it. No question.
All right. Thank you. Director Lynn.
No comment.
Thank you. Director Morin, our Vice Chair, Morin.
Thank you. Uh, looks good to me.
Director Newman?
Uh, no, no questions for me. Thanks.
Director Solowski?
Not at this time.
Uh, Director Stanley through, um, our administrative assistant.
She said, "No questions, like the reworking. Thank you."
Thank you. Director, uh, Chair Shields, I have no additional questions. Thank you. So could we go ahead now and have a motion to approve as presented JFCEB, uh, and the deletion of the previous JFCEB policies? Boy, you guys, come on.
Uh, I move that we approve the proposed policy JFCEB and at the same time delete the current policy JFCEB.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
I'll second.
Oh, good. We got a couple of seconds. Thank you so much. So it's been moved and seconded to move forward with the presented JFCEB and then sunset the deleted JFCEB. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Show of hands.
Uh.
Aye.
All right. Any opposed, please? And we're recording Melissa as well.
Director Stanley says aye as well.
Thank you so much. Okay, moving on now to the second read of JFCEB Administrative Rule AR. And, um, again, uh, Superintendent Owens or Director Olson, I assume you're going to walk us through anything that you would like us to know prior to making a motion.
Yes, there were no, um, no changes, um, requested or discussed, um, about the, um, the language in the AR. It is this straight from the OSBA proposed, um, uh, AR, um, and I, I, yes. I don't know that it requires a board vote, as it is an AR, as opposed to a policy.
I see what you're saying. Um, well, that's, well, first of all, let's make sure we go through, um, with each of our Directors and Vice Chair, uh, to see if there would be any additional questions about it, and we'll go in the reverse order. So, um, I have no additional questions. Um, I'll give Director Stanley a moment to think about that and then move directly over to Director Solowski.
No, thank you.
And then Director Newman?
Uh, no questions. I, I know this came from OSBA directly, but I appreciate that it's really clearly set out what a family or parent would need for requesting an exemption.
Thank you. Vice Chair Morin?
Not at this time. Thank you.
Director Lynn?
No.
Thank you. Director Harden? Okay. And then Director Stanley, any questions?
She says I'm good. No questions.
Okay. Thank you so much. All right then, uh, what we would need, and we're hearing no additional questions, is we would need the approval of the proposed. Oh, wait a minute. We were just talking about the fact, do we need a motion and a second on this? Um, Missy, do you want to move it, uh, weigh in on, on that point of order?
Sure. So this is a, um, and there are some ARs that do require board adoption or board approval. This is not one of them. Uh, we do have a practice, however, of this board approving ARs, even though they may or may not be required legislatively. So I think that's up to the discretion of the board if they want to go ahead and, uh, take action on this AR.
Thank you. That was my first impression, but it was like, oh, always good to ask, right? And make sure and clarify. So, uh, Board members, let's go ahead and make a motion to uh, approve the proposed, um, a JFCEB AR and the subsequent deletion of the same administrative.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we got a motion and a second for approval of the administrative regulation and deletion of the previous one. All those in favor indicate by saying aye and hands.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Super. Thank you so much.
Director Stanley is also an aye.
Thank you, Director Stanley. And I, uh, we have no listed new business unless Superintendent Owens, there's something that just showed up quickly. We would have adjusted the agenda, I believe, if we had anything. Uh, so, um, Superintendent Owens, we're moving on then to future agenda items, please.
What I have listed for future agenda items, thank you, Chair Shields, is, um, as I indicated in my weekly email, um, Board Leadership, um, and Missy and I have talked about, um, establishing more proclamations, and so we have a proclamation scheduled uh, with the National Native American Heritage Month, and we're getting support from Chief Andrig in, um, developing, um, proclamations, uh, for us. We also have, um, on the list, the, um, Student Investment Account Annual Reflection Report, the Behavioral Safety Assessment and Annual Restraint and Seclusion Report, um, OSBA Elections, and then, um, now that we have gotten past the, um, Devices Policy, um, we have the capacity to hopefully bring forward, um, some additional policies here shortly.
Thank you. Um, not to put, uh, Missy alert. Ms. Grindel. Uh, when you were talking about the, uh, dinner that we're supposed to have at OSBA is, do you have everybody's input that you need, or do you need to, um, prompt any of us to get our RSVPs in for the regional dinner? And I'm breaking out at you, Missy. And you're muted. Sorry, I just flipped out.
Did that happen for everybody?
Did it happen for, okay. It was like, oh, what did I do? What did I touch?
I'll answer for, for Missy and say some of us could probably use some reminders.
Okay.
Sorry about that. It looks like I had some issues with my, uh, I don't know what happened there. I, so regarding the OSBA, uh, regional meeting, if you're interested in attending, please just let me know. Uh, it's really up to you if you would like to go. So, and I think right now we do have one director that is interested in attending, and I know, uh, Superintendent Owens will be going as well. So if anybody else would like to go, just let me know. Sorry about my technology.
All right. Board Directors, any, um, good at the order before we adjourn this meeting? I'm looking around at the screen. Thank you. Now, before we adjourn, you know that we are going into an executive session, and so I'm looking at mine, uh, clock says 7:20. If we just give ourselves maybe five minutes of transition time, um, because we have a different link, is that correct? Um, I saw two, uh, calendar invites, so I didn't test, um, Missy, are they two different Zoom links?
Yes, we have a separate Zoom link for the executive session.
Okay, so 7:26, I'll see you over there in executive session using the other Zoom link. All right?